As Vice Chair of the Planning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which I am authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we A provide public access to the meeting by telephone, additional access possibilities on video or electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access contemporaneously to listen and if necessary participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone. One, six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six. Password will be nine, five, five, two, seven, one, eight, one, oh, five. Or you can click on the following website address. It is HTTPS colon backslash backslash zoom.us backslash J as in Joseph, nine, five, five, two, seven, one, eight, one, zero, five. This meeting is also being aired on Newmarket Channel 13 for those wishing to watch on their TV, and it is streaming at Newmarket, sorry, www.nuemarketnh.gov backslash channel 13. B, we are providing public notice-
Yeah, nice day, buddy. Did you get a little bit?
People mute there. Thank you. B, we are providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Board at HTTPS backslash backslash www.nu market.gov backslash planning board. C, we are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please call six, zero, three, six, five, nine, three, six, one, seven, extension one, three, two, one. Or you can email channel13@newmarketnh.gov. Adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that we will be handling all votes by a roll call meeting. And we will start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. I'd also like to correct this, that we have provided public access by opening up the Town Hall. If anyone wishes to attend the meeting at the Town Hall, you can join in there. With that, I will call the roll. Eric Botterman, Eric, are you on the call? No. Eric has an excused absence. Val Shelton, I am here, and no one is in the room with me. Jane Ford.
I'm present and I'm alone.
Thank you. William Doucette.
I'm here and alone.
Thank you. Timothy Rosignol.
Here, my wife's in the next room.
Okay, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Jeff Goldknop.
Present and currently alone.
And welcome to Jeff as well.
Thank you.
Mikell Zahork.
Present and alone.
Mikell, you will be sitting in for Eric Botterman this evening. Scott Blackstone.
Present and alone.
Val, I'm here.
Oh, Eric, you're here.
I'm sorry. Val, I'm here for a little bit anyways. I'm here. I'm sorry, I was muted.
So Mikell, if Eric isn't participating, I will appoint you at that time. Scott Blackstone.
Present and alone.
Good, thank you. Okay, first order of the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So if anyone's in the meeting, please mute unless you're speaking. Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. Anyone please stand. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First order on the agenda is the review and approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve from the Board?
Motion to approve the March 16th, 2021 minutes.
Motion by Mr. Doucette. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jane Ford. Okay, any discussion on the minutes? Any corrections? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. Eric Botterman. Eric, are you with us? Okay, Jane Ford. Bill Doucette.
Hi.
Tim Rosignol.
Hi.
Jeff Goldknop.
Abstaining.
Are you abstaining?
Yes, abstaining.
Tim may want to-
Jim, are you abstaining?
I was able, um, I was able to review the minutes and I was also at the last meeting, so.
We'll record the vote. Mikell Zahork. Scott Blackstone.
Hi.
Eric, are you back with us? All right, I'm recording Mikell's vote for Eric. Next order of business, is there anyone on the call from the public who wishes to make a public comment? That is nothing on the agenda for this evening? And if you could use your little raised hand or just speak up. Okay, hearing none, I'm going to close the public comments section. First order under regular business. This is a continuation of a public hearing for the request from John Tyson of Hampton, New Hampshire, who has a purchase and sales agreement for property at 75 Neil Mill Road. Pursuant to RSA 674:41, he is requesting permission from the Town Council to build a single-family home in driveway access for a single-family home at the property at 75 Neil Mill Road, Newmarket, New Hampshire, which is a tax map R7 lot 1. The Town Council has requested review and comment from the Planning Board regarding this request. So did the applicant, we did some research on this. I asked Diane, Eric and I did, asked Diane to send out to the Board the memorandum that was sent October 15, 2008, when the Board took up this thing for a prior applicant. And a lot of due diligence was done at that time. The reason for this is, number one, we don't want the applicant, and I'm referring to as an applicant, I know this is an application before us, but we didn't think that it was fair to the prospective purchaser of this property to have to go through considerable time and expense in sidewalks or engineering in order for, and then go to the Town Council. And the Town Council, whether or not they approved it, that really would have been, you know, not fair to the prospective purchaser or as an applicant. So did the applicant also get a copy of this, Diane? John? Is there?
Forwarded to Mr. Albert, and it's also up on the virtual agenda, Novus Agenda, online if people want to view it there.
Okay, and I would just like to comment that we know that our comments, if the Planning Board decides to move this forward, if we use this as a basis, we would obviously update it to reflect what the current process has been for this particular applicant in regards to what their proposed use is. And certainly the deliberations that we have had. Any questions at this point from the applicant? Or their attorney?
Yes, Jane Scully, I'll let Chris Albert go after. I just had a quick question as far as any substantive additions that would be made to that. Would we be privy to know that information this evening, or is that something that would be coming out later?
I think I was really, I was really referring to, you know, there's the name of the Jaziano within the application. There's some comments as to what their proposed use was, you know, which would not apply here. Obviously, on this go around, we did not do any investigations relative to other town, you know, ordinances regarding classics. So more of those types of items, and certainly I think that the Town Planner should send this to you for review. Our intent was to get this before the Council, before we have to start spending a lot of money. And I don't, and the Board will deliberate on this relative to the three recommendations that we forwarded to the Town Council at that time. With being, only one of them really applies to the Planning Board.
Yes, okay, thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Chris. Thank you.
Chris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really didn't have too much more to add. I mean, I think, you know, I understand what Diane tonight is really just kind of your take to present this to Town Council, so at tonight's hearing, we don't have any new information, of course. So we're just really here for any type of Q and A answers that the Board may have back to us. And hopefully, like you said, have recommendations from the Planning Board at tonight to move this forward to Town Council, however you want to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Does the Board have any questions? Bill, yeah.
So are we proposing that we use the general outline that was used back in, was that 2008? And edit that accordingly. And, you know, eliminate things that are not pertinent, like former proposed uses and like that. And come to agreement to what that says and forward that to the Town Council, period.
That is, that is correct. Relative to the Town, to the Planner, the Planning Board's role in this process, which our recommendation at that time, and if the Board is in agreement tonight, would be relative to if the Town Council, because there's bigger issues here that are not of the purview of the Planning Board. It's really more of the Town Council's role in determining whether or not they want to issue building permits on the Classics Road. The role of the Planning Board is to ensure that it's not premature or scattered development, and that it is, you know, it's safe. And the Town's not taking on the liability relative to the actual issue of the road and the construction of the road and access for emergency vehicles. And therefore, that particular recommendation under number one is that if in fact the Town Council gives the green light, you know, to the applicant, because at that point they would have an application, or they do have an application for the Council. If the Council gives a green light and agrees with the Planning Board, that they, with regards to, it needs to come back to the Planning Board for basically the approval of the Planning Board relative to the road construction under our existing ordinances. You know, that's up to the Council. This would be our recommendation, that it should come back to us. And at that time, then at least the applicant understands that here are the regulations. You may have to request waivers in order to basically meet the regulations, but you're not doing that ahead of time and then going to the Town Council and they say no. So that, to answer your question, Bill, yes, as edited, but that we would anticipate it would come back to the Board. Bill, you're on mute.
It appears to me that anticipation was reflected in the Planning Board recommendations of 2008 as well, that there would be, you know, further review after Town Council approval or conditional approval. Would it be appropriate if I were to make a motion that we provide our recommendations to the Town Council based on page three of the 2008 letter entitled Planning Board Recommendations, so the bottom half of page three. Except for changing owners' names if they are stated here, which I'm not seeing it quickly. But removing discussion about proposed uses other than construction of a single-family home.
Before you do that, Bill, I want to hear from other Board members, okay? And then I do want, I want to hear from anyone in the public if they have questions on how we're handling this process. So Josh, I saw you waving your hands, hand there. Okay, I will definitely recognize you. And then Bill, absolutely would entertain a motion. Any other Board members? Let me just go through to make it easier, because we have a lot of people on this, on the, here, on the call. Jane, any questions or comments?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Tim?
No questions this time.
Jeff?
My one thought would be, are any of the items on page two still pertinent? I know we didn't discuss them. I do believe maybe some of those items were discussed, but can they still be provided with a date of a previous recommendation? As some of them, like I said, may still be, still make sense.
Do you have any in particular that you're questioning?
Well, there was talking here about if the road was to then further be improved and how they would get 50 feet out of it, things like that.
Yeah. The, the conditions at the time in 2008 would appear to be the same as they are today. There's been no improvements made to the road. Obviously, we understand there's a lot more use of the area, but relative to those items, these were the issues that were deliberated on extensively back in '08. As to what, if there are any that particularly don't apply, like we haven't changed the zoning. You know, I think maybe something that may have applied, you know, might change that would be looked at is, you know, some communities don't allow structures, you know, beyond 600 feet. That's what we found back in '08. Some limit the length of a cul-de-sac to 1,200. You know, these were just comments relative to that point in time. But I don't know if you had any particular items that you saw on page two that you think do not apply, or you would question whether they still apply.
I have not assessed it for those that do not apply. I can take a quick list, though. Val, pass on the mic.
Mikell?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, Scott?
I agree with you, Val. I think that the perspective of the Town Council is going to be very different from the perspective of the Planning Board. I think that it's, it's it's good for the client to take it first to the Town Council, so that if they say, if they say no, then there's no cost. You know, we haven't, we haven't forced the applicant to incur a lot of costs for nothing. So I would agree with that approach.
Thank you. Josh Lanzetta, so anyone speaking from the public, if you could just state your name when I recognize you and your address, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Josh Lanzetta. My address is 601 Central Avenue, Dover, New Hampshire, 03820. I'm an attorney at Bruton and Buridi. I'm here this evening representing Dr. Joth Barnett and also the Southeast Land Trust. Dr. Barnett and the Southeast Land Trust are both Director Butters to the property proposed for development here. We have a number of concerns, and Dr. Barnett's concerns specifically align with those of CELT. So I'm going to try to speak very briefly about our concerns, and I want to make sure the Board understands that we are asking that the Board make the recommendation as is its right and mandate under RSA 67441 to deny this application, that you recommend that the Select Board deny this application. There are a number of reasons that this application is completely deficient. And it is the Planning Board's job, as mandated by the statute, to review this application and make recommendations, specific recommendations, to the Town Council. You can't punt. You can't punt. Legally, you have to make recommendations that the Council can rely on. You're right. The Council has a very different function than that of the Planning Board. The plans and the application packet that's been submitted is grossly deficient. We can't actually have, as a Butters, a coherent conversation about what this application means for this road, for the Butters, and for the region. As you all know, this area abuts the Picassic Greenway, and there are a few different Class 6 roads and also a trail that interconnect here. There are real safety concerns that are not addressed in this applicant's materials. And we really can't talk about them, so I can make some, I can guess. I can guess at what is kind of happening here. And so I'm going to address some of these issues, but it's the Board's job to mandate that the applicant submit proper plans so that they can be reviewed by the Town's Road Agent. The Road Agent can give commentary to this Board, and this Board can then make recommendations to Town Council. So the first concern we have, and the underlying concern, is safety. We have heard throughout this application process, kind of different plans related to roadbed substrates, grading, and fill. There are wetlands involved here. That hasn't been, that issue has not been fleshed out by the applicant in any way. And we don't know, really, you know, there's allegedly a two-rod public way. We've heard possibly that it's a 14-foot road infrastructure proposal. I want to be clear that this is not a driveway proposal. This is a public way. The driveway to this property would start at the curb cut proposed by the applicant. Every other portion of the development proposed is on a Class 6 road, which is a public way. We don't know what the substrates are. We don't know if the applicant is going to do test pits, core drilling. We don't know where in that public way this road will ultimately fall. There's 700 feet approximately from the existing terminus of Neil Mill Road to the property. We don't know what the ledge is, where they're going to blast, or may need to move things to bury power lines. None of that has been fully fleshed out, and the plans are deficient as to all of these issues. There's a safety concern that if we add soil substrates to this road, if we raise the roadbed a foot and a half to two feet, or however much, what does that do to the topography? I had the chance to walk this property today for the first time. I've never been to this part of New Hampshire, even though I was born and raised here. The road is all over the place. I think everyone knows that. There are very steep pitches that pitch down to the roadbed. There are ditches at parts of it. There is a lot of ledge and rock protruding from the roadbed. It's very soft because it's surrounded by jurisdictional wetlands. And we have no idea what the changes, really what these changes are proposed. We have this amorphous. We're going to possibly upgrade this road to some unknown standard. And that's a real safety concern for all people accessing this road. The second kind of 1A safety concern is related to the existing gate. This is a Classics Road with, that is gated. Now that gate is chained but remains open. If I didn't, if I wasn't a land use lawyer and I didn't know what I know about road law, I would drive my 4Runner up to that, a car that could probably drive on almost any road in New Hampshire. And I would think, oh, this is closed, can't drive down there. And I would stop there, try to park, and I'd be a pedestrian from there on in, right? Mechanizing this gate, removing the gate, or possibly relocating the gate, I think causes an enormous safety issue that would end up in possible policing and enforcement on the Town's part on this Class 6 road. I think we don't know what needs to happen with that gate, and I think it's the Planning Board's job to try to sort that out pre-Select Board review. The way this is supposed to work is the Planning Board vets an application thoroughly, and then that application is sent to the Select Board for ultimate approval or denial. It's the applicant's burden to provide the materials necessary for a robust and full review. So that has not been done here. And we don't know what's going to happen with that gate, and I think that removing that gate or moving it maybe 700 or 800 feet down this public way is going to create a whole new host of safety issues for the Town of Newmarket. There is no parking area for, on this road past that gate. The road at points today, we measured, the roadbed's about 10 feet in some spots, it's 14 feet in some spots, give or take. There's nowhere to park, and if you open this up to vehicular traffic, it's a lot easier to drive down there without a gate, and it's a lot easier to drive down at least 700 feet, the gates moved. Where are those cars going to park? Who is going to police it when a car is blocking the road? And what does that mean for the Town? Does that mean that the Town is suddenly policing and now maybe maintaining this road? And does that mean that maybe this road is now considered upgraded to Class 5 status, where the Town now has to pay for maintenance and access on this road? We don't know, because the applicant hasn't provided the proper materials for the Board to review. The length of this road improvement, as proposed, is approximately 700 feet from the terminus of the pavement at the gated access point. I think it's been referenced here that most towns have a limit on how far a possible waiver request- Uh, a possible waiver request would be allowed on a classics road. Now, I understand the New Market doesn't have that. That's unfortunate. However, um, seven hundred feet is really far. Um, that's almost halfway to the trail where the trail starts, and it's substantially past Old Lee Road, which is a classics road. That intersects with this road. And again, going back to the gate issue, what happens if the gate is moved or removed? What happens to Old Lee Road? Are people now driving on that road? And what does the traffic look like? This is a pretty heavily trafficked area. So again, safety issues. And the road length, coming back to the road length issue. The idea behind limiting a road length distance, a linear footage. Um, and you could probably, as an analogy, apply subdivision regulations in this instance. Is to limit the one-way, the one-way in, one-way out nature of this sort of development. At this point, if this gate remains, or if it's removed, and there's one house at the end of this road. All of New Market's emergency access vehicles. Uh, would need to be able to get down that road and turn around. Now, I know that the applicant proposes a turnaround. We looked at that proposed location today. It will require hundreds and hundreds of yards of material to fill, and it is right next to jurisdictional wetlands. It's not clear to me that the applicant will be able to fill that area. And I don't know that an L-shaped hammerhead um, on a suspect soilbed substrate. Is something that the town should agree to at this point, without more information. Again, this goes to the point that. The application is deficient in every way. The last point that I wanna make about this is that, right now, in New Market's zoning ordinance. This is a non-conforming lot. Um, the town does not have to grant the expansion of some use of a non-conforming lot. That's why there's a waiver process. And bringing that back to the RSA, it's the board's job before the select board's review. To provide the appropriate comments about this project. And we don't believe respectfully that the applicant has submitted the appropriate documentation. And the appropriate plan sets that would allow this board and the public at large to have. The requisite feedback required of a project of this nature. Uh, we want to assert um, that the timbre of this neighborhood will forever change. If this lot is developed. Now, we're not here to say that the lot cannot be developed, or that it can be developed. What we're saying. Is that in order to make that decision, which will be precedent-setting in this town. There's no doubt about that. Seven hundred feet down a classics road doesn't happen. I can tell you that because I do this work all of the time. This will be precedent-setting for the entire Greenway. This is an island of unpreserved land amidst conservation land in the town of New Market. And this board needs to take control and actually review a properly submitted application. So respectfully, we have safety concerns, we don't have answers. And it's not appropriate to just pump this over to the select board without vetting this project thoroughly. And providing articulate, rational, and the critical word is reasonable recommendations. At this point. The application as it stands must, the recommendation has to be to deny it. So that the applicant comes back with a full application. It is their burden to provide the correct materials. It is not the town's. They are trying to build on a class six road. When they bought this property, they had actual notice. That this property was accessed via a class six gated road. Actual notice. So, they knew this. It's their burden, and I, we strongly encourage the board. To either continue this hearing and require that the applicant come back with proper materials. Or to make the recommendation that this is denied. Um, I'll cede the floor and I, I am happy to answer any questions about the relevant laws. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the uh, public wish to speak? Uh, Mr. Chaffey?
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Um, going back to two thousand eight, just looking over uh, some of the notes from what happened. Uh, back then and some of the discussions. Two things I noted were. The council was starting a, a, a working committee to develop a class six. It was recommended that the council.
Was recommended, correct?
Recommended, and they were in, that was somehow in motion. And, you know, not to look in the rearview mirror, but lives would be easier if that policy had been placed. Uh, back then. Also, um, from the last public hearing. Uh, the Conservation Commission was kinda holding their uh, cards. Uh, for the time being until there was a stightwalk, until, until things advanced. In the event that that doesn't happen, if you continue on the course that you're, you're suggesting. I would like to see or hear the Conservation Commission's take on this, because they did opine. In two thousand eight, prior to the town council getting the recommendation. And, and finally, if you look at the way that the recommendation to the council was made, and I understand there's uh. Requirements for verbiage, but the sentence structure, it flows like. This is approved. And there's, there's ifs in there. If this is approved, the planning board uh, should do this, that, and the other. But if you read it quickly, it says, you know. It, it infers approval from a planning board. So if things served, fully cooked to the town council. Uh, you know, here's our recommendations, and, and when we get it back from you to work on it. You know, these are the caveats that we have, which, those are all, those are all worthy. It's just the way that the, the language is presented there. So if you're gonna cut and paste from uh, two thousand eight. I'd just be mindful of things that are out of date, of course, but also the way it's, it's positioned that you're making. Yeah, this is your summary, this is your recommendation, not a fait accompli. Thanks.
You're welcome. Uh, any other members of the public? I'm sorry, can't. Um, Joff?
Yes, hi, Joff Barnett. I'm one of the butters. Uh, the driveway will, will go through land that I have on both sides. And um, first I have a question for the, a planning board, because it was my understanding. Uh, that during the last meeting, there was some discussion about having a site. Uh, site uh, review with the applicant at some point. And so I, I'm surprised a little bit. Is, but wasn't that the case? Or do I have that completely wrong?
No, there was discussion on that.
So. From my point of view, I think it's uh, that you need to take a look at the site. Uh, prior to just taking what was written thirteen years ago. And forwarding that to the council. Uh, things have changed. Uh, the, I'm sure the road has changed to some degree. Uh, over the course of a decade, of more than a decade. And uh, I think it would behoove the planning board. Uh, to walk the road uh, with the applicant, to hear what the applicant is going to talk about. Uh, take a look at, at least the plan that they had put forward, uh, involved removal of some trees. Uh, removal of some rocks, and really take a look at um, uh, the topography that's going on there. Um, and so I'm, I'm, as a member of the public, I'm expressing surprise. That you're just picking up something from thirteen years ago and just gonna send that forward to the town council, and I, I. Would uh, recommend and, and request that the planning board do more. And really find out whether uh, those points that are in that memo from two thousand and eight. Apply in this time. Um, and uh, that's the only thing I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, just for the public's benefit, to be clear, the recommendation from the planning board in oh eight. Was that the council require the app, an actual application be filed with the planning board. Relative to the road construction in all the issues as um, Attorney Lazada has brought up. Are reviewed as part of the subdivision regulations relative to that particular section of our, of our subdivision regulations. So to be clear, that was the recommendation of the board. And I think that's where Bill was heading with his motion. It, it's not just to turn it over to the council and say that our recommendation is to, you know, approve this, or just. Punt it and put it back into their court. Um, I'm gonna let other members of the public speak. Attorney Lazada first. Anyone else from the public? And. I apologize. I, I can't see everyone who's on the call. Is there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Just unmute yourself and I'll try to get you recognized. Okay? Before I close the public hearing, uh, Attorney Lazada, if you have any more comments? If you could keep them brief, you're good? Okay. All right. Um, hearing none, I'm gonna close the public comment section. Okay, planning board members. Additional comments?
I, I have, sorry, I have one more comment here. The, so I did notice something in the upper, upper portion that I believe should be removed, but. As far as the, the council granting potentially uh, uh, an, an approval on their end. And then it comes back to the planning board. At that point, if there's no, is that the blank slate where they start designing what we ask? Um, or, or what the regulations provide? It, it, it's, it almost feels like it's a, it's a done deal at that point, and, and it's a clear path to um, approval.
Well.
Um, it, I would, uh, it, one, one thing I would say is that if, if. The applicant would be held to the planning, the um, the subdivision regulations that. Possibly number one on the bottom would need to be modified. Where it says in granting approval, the planning board may apply the process and standards provided. Should that say shall, or? Cause if it says may, does that not then give?
Well, I think that would be, you know, what would be included in the motion if someone's so making that motion. Um, but your point taken, Jeff, is that it's not. That recommendation to the council is, and, and the council says, yeah, we're in agreement with that. And the, and the, the applicant comes back with their full-blown sets of, set of plans. They. If you read our subdivision regulations relative to the road section of it, they can't. Meet all those regulations unless we grant waivers. So they're gonna have to prove before the board, if in fact that's what the council agrees with. They would have to be able to, to meet those regulations. I mean, road width, they don't have fifty feet of a road width. So we would have to be waiving some of those, and they would have to meet all of the, the engineering requirements. And then, you know, as was presented, the wetlands, you know, issues as well. I'm sorry, I've closed the public hearing. Um. Bill?
So, I, I agree with you, Val, that um, you cannot, you cannot state that it shall meet subdivision regulations. Cause subdivision regulations do not uh, speak specific to this application. This is not an application for subdivision. This is an application for access along a class six road to, to. Uh, meet a, uh, reach a residential use.
Well, it, 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 sorry.
That's, it's, no, I, and if I misspoke, I was referring to the specific se- section of the subdivision regulations. As was in the recommendation. I'm sorry, Jeff?
Well, it, it, it's, okay. I, I would think that you, the starting point would be shall, and then the waiver would be granted. To create may, but I guess I could be incorrect on that.
Yeah, we're not, not supposed to use the word shall anymore. Must. Um. So, I, I think um, Attorney Lazada suggested that this is uh, chicken before the egg, or the egg before the chicken. Um, I did not hear anything from the applicant on a rebuttal of that. Um, so, little, little perplexed, perplexed by that, but um. We started out this evening talking about what we would do is, instead of this applicant. Being faced with the burden of um, considerable uh, engineering design. And satisfaction of all the concerns that have been brought forward. That, I don't think anybody has suggested that any of these concerns have fallen on deaf ears. Um, we, we, we take all this input from the butters, from the public. Um, ver- very seriously, and we're not trying to um. Ignore those conditions. What, what the attempt is here is. Let's not spend a lot of everybody's time, the planning board's time, uh, technical review time, town engineer time. If for some reason the town council doesn't wanna do this. You know, for, for a, for a non-technical reason, for, for a reason that does not have to do with. Engineering standard safety of, of access to this road, let's find that out now. Instead of going through all this. And their approval will be conditioned upon, we are satisfied that this can be safe and harmonious. With the other users of this town road. I mean, the, this parcel in question was a lot before these abutting parcels were lots. Um, I, I doubt they were paid damages that. Forced them to no longer have rights along this town road, when this converted from a five to a six. So, I. It, this seems like a reasonable compromise. Let's, let's find out what the. What, what the temperature of the town council is before we lead this um, applicant. In, into considerable burden.
May I speak, Madam Chair?
All right, we'll reopen the public hearing, and then Attorney Lazada, if you also wanna speak again. Um, Chris?
Yeah, no, I, I, I think, you know, I've been working with Diane over the last couple of weeks since our last hearing of. You know, of kinda having the marching orders from the planning board to us, the applicant, on, on how to proceed. And I think it was, you know, uh, Ms. Hardy's, you know, decision and, and the boards that, that this would be the course of action, which. Makes sense to, to me and the applicant. Again, we're, we're talking about a substantial amount of money. Uh, to get to a point where it goes to town council and they could, they could shoot it down to begin with. So I. I appreciate uh, Mr. Doucette's, uh, you know, thought process and, and the planning board's thought process and how to. Make this work, cause again, you know, I, again, I took this project on just as a normal classics driveway. And as far as the other attorney that's been speaking, I mean, we did denial lane in the. Town of Epping, which is a house lot on a, on a residential driveway. It's about a two thousand foot. Class six road. So it, it does happen. Uh, they're out there in the state. Uh, again, I thought this was a simple project, but again, we've got a lot of environmental concerns with the butters, and I. I think this is a sensitive project. Uh, so, you know, we're, we're here to work with the planning board and. And everybody, and, and the whole gate issue, I mean, we were, we're working, you know, we're willing to work with, you know, fire rescue, the TRC, the. Planning board councils. Do we have a mechanized gate? Do we take the gate away? I mean, again, we're opening to suggestions, cause. We're all vested interest on that between uh, Celt and the butter, and, you know. Limiting access to the, the roadway. So again, this wasn't, it started out as an open dialogue, so. Again, I appreciate the planning board's uh, uh, discretion on how to move forward. I don't, I don't think you guys are kicking the can. I think it's a good. Process where we, we find out what the town council actually thought process on this before we start spending a lot of time and effort. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Attorney Scully?
Yeah, if I may, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I, I apologize I didn't respond immediately. I, I didn't know that I was privy to that opportunity. Um, and so rather than um, I, I think get into a lengthy legal argument for the board and, and. Um, with Attorney Lanzetta, um, you know, I agree with Mr. Doucette, and I think I agree with Chris as well. With how this has unfolded. Um, and, you know, ultimately, rather than get into a lengthy legal argument this evening, I. Agree with the board's approach, and um, as you all are aware, we've worked with you previously at, at other meetings and. Think that this is a viable approach, because this would be exorbitantly expensive upon the applicant. Because this would be exorbitantly expensive upon the applicant, not knowing if this is even a, a, a possibility. Um, and pursuant to the statute, I mean, I, I, you know, we're referencing Chapter Six Seventy Four, specifically Section Forty One. And ultimately, the decision as to whether or not, um, what this board has to get put forth, it's up to the planning board. What's necessary for the applicant, for the burden. Um, the statute specifically states that it's really up to you all. As to what needs to be put forth to the town council. So ultimately, that responsibility is up to you. And while I respect my brother's concerns in, in this field, um, I do think that the decision rests with, with you all. In putting this forward to the governing body, that in this case being the town council, so. I don't think statutorily, you all are doing anything wrong with moving this forward to town council. In fact, I think at this juncture, it's probably appropriate. Rather than have everyone spin their wheels for an excessive amount of time, ultimately to get to a town council decision. Where they may say this, you know, we're not in favor of this, or perhaps they are, but if they are. Then this still is going to go through a, a overwhelmingly stringent, uh, you know, analysis before this happens. Um, so, I do appreciate my brother's concerns, I understand them, um, but I do appreciate the board's willingness. To consider moving this forward, um, with, with the concerns that were raised by, to do, thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Scully. Attorney Lizada, do you have, do you have just a new information to present?
Um, I just have one, one quick response. Um, I just wanna call to the board's attention and respectfully to everyone that's commented tonight. Hey, the critical word to focus on in Six Seventy Four Forty One, D Sub One, is the word after. It's the word after. The local governing body, which in this case is the town select board, after review and comment by the planning board. That review and comment needs to be more robust than referencing a document from two thousand and eight, from a different applicant or a different project. I understand that modifications to that document will be made, but you don't have enough information to make proper review and comment. The select board is not a board with your expertise. The statute is designed specifically for the planning board to review a full application. And then make specific comments about approval or denial to the board of selection. This is how it works in the state of New Hampshire. Can tell you this because actually, almost ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, work for developers. I'm usually on the other side of this issue, and I can tell you that. The argument of saving costs, which is, I, I don't, I'm not trying to bring the, uh, the gods of cost down on the applicant. And I understand that this is an expensive process, but I work with clients over the last decade and a half that deal with this all the time. You have to get the right answer and the right comments before you go to the next level. You don't get to double dip with contemporaneous filings, and you don't get out of jail free. By kicking the can to a different board to review and then saying, well, our review will be subject to further review again. By the planning board. That doesn't work. That's not the legal standard, and that's not the way it works in this state. Um, and I think the case law is really clear on that. Um, you know, moving forward. My clients asked me to ask, you know, to make sure that if this does get punted, which we really strongly recommend that if you're going to punt. We least recommend a denial. Because there's not sufficient evidence to weigh this object. Um, I don't think the subdivision regulations are going to necessarily help one way or the other, and I don't know if they apply. It's not a subdivision. Mr. Doucette's right about that. Just not. So, this is the chance to review your ordinance and to look at this road and to tell the select board, hey. This works because of X, Y, and Z. It doesn't work because of X, Y, and Z. It might come out favoring the development, or it might not. But that's your job. It's not the select board, and your job is now. So a continuance asking for more robust plans and a better application is the most appropriate thing you can do. Um, the second most appropriate thing that you can do respectfully is make the recommendation that the board deny this application in its current form. Um, and our, and our, my client would like to confirm that, you know, if, if it goes to select board, and I think I know the answer to this, but I'd like it on the public record. We wanna make sure everyone understands that it would then come back to the planning board. Um, for full public review, noticed review, and commentary, but it, at this point. You're puniting, and I think it, you should, I think that you're obligated to make robust comments. On an appropriately filed application. Um, saving cost is not the town's problem. I understand the impetus, I think it's great. I wish I saw that with more zoning matters in a way. But that's not the way it works. So respectfully, I think I can, we would request that you would continue this. And ask for a better plan set, so that we can have an actual conversation with the applicant about the requirements and make real recommendations. In twenty twenty-one to the board. Or that you make, if you wanna kick this to the board, that you do so with the recommendation of a denial. That's all I have.
Before I close the public comments again, for the final time, are there any other comments from the public?
Do I have permission to respond?
Yes, but I not, we're not gonna get involved with attorney to attorney. The board has its own attorney. If we feel like we have aired, we will be taking this up with our attorney. If they bring it back, you know, if in fact, would, if there's a motion tonight to be made.
Absolutely, and that's what I would avoid, Madam Chairman, so I appreciate that. Um, so my response ultimately is, is what I said before, and I apologize to be repetitive, but. Um, it's up, it's up to the planning board to determine whether or not the application is complete. Um, so, really, the jurisdiction rests with you all, um, as to determine whether or not it, it should move forward to the town council or not, so. We respectfully disagree, um, and, you know, we're hoping that you all would be understanding of that. And we look forward to continuing to work with the town throughout this process. That's all. Thank you.
Um, all right, I am closing the public hearing. Uh, four members, Bill?
Is there an application before us?
There's not.
So we cannot vote whether something is complete or not. There has not been an application submitted.
Correct. We, we're providing comments to the town, Diane, hold on. We're providing to- comments to the town council. As relative to the council acting on that application. Diane, if you unmute yourself. Diane, you have to unmute yourself.
I just wanna, I have a copy of the RSA right in front of me, and if.
Yeah, let's not.
I just wanna make sure that the planning board understands, the language says after review and comment. It says nothing about submission and review of.
Yeah.
Details of the project, and as a matter of fact, I had a discussion with our own legal counsel about it. Who said ultimately, the decision is the town councils. So I think that maybe you're right. I think we do need to get some feedback, perhaps from our own legal counsel. To clarify what the expectations are for the planning board. In doing their job, which is to review and comment. It is not to approve detailed plans at this stage. And that's my comment, and that's why I would recommend that you get a legal opinion from John Raddigan to, to clarify. Because it doesn't say anything about detailed plans, it doesn't say anything about the owners is on the town to come up with standards. It says none of that, and maybe it is, uh.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's not get involved with what the RSA.
Then, then from the applicants. Thank you.
Is, where does the board wanna head with this? Is there a motion? It's either a motion to continue and take another step, or it's a motion to move it forward, and if we are requesting any conditions, Mr. Doucette?
I'll make a motion to continue. I think we need to get some information from our town attorney.
Does the board concur with that?
I definitely support Bill's statement.
All right, is that a second?
Second.
Okay, Bill, you need to make the motion actually to, to the next meeting, which is May eleventh.
I make a motion to continue this hearing to the May eleventh. Meeting and request that, uh, Diane, um. Contact town council for advice moving forward.
Legal counsel.
Legal counsel.
Thank you. Hey Jane, that was a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote? Uh, Scott Blackstone?
Aye.
Mikell Zahorek?
I'm not sure Valerie if I'm in, I don't know if Eric is here or not.
No, Eric has left.
Okay.
Yeah.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Holding up? Tim Rozignol?
Aye.
William Doucette?
Aye.
Jane Ford?
Aye.
Valerie Shelton, aye. Okay, this shall be continued to the May eleventh meeting, and Diane, you'll send this out to John Raddigan and then get back to the board, please. Okay, next on the agenda. CRC Future Corp, there will be a public hearing for an application for an amendment to the final subdivision and major site plan. Requested by CRC Future Corp for a site plan approved on eleven, twelve, nineteen, to increase the number of units from twenty-eight to thirty-eight. There will be six single-family homes where seven were previously approved, and the remaining previously approved single-family homes will become duplexes. Lot is located at Hershey Lane, Tax Map, R Five, Lot One Thirty Two, in the R Two Zone. The app, who is, I'm sorry, um, people.
I, I need to, I need to abstain.
Here?
Okay.
Alex Montesera?
Hold, hold on, Diane. All right, Jeff, are you abstaining as well?
Yeah, I recuse myself from discussion.
Sorry, refusing yourself. Okay, we still have enough members. Um, who is speaking for the applicant?
I will, Paul Carrigan.
Okay. Here again. Um, why don't you kinda give the board an overview as to what is being proposed as to the changes?
Sure, I'd be happy to, thank you. Uh, tonight, we're seeking approval for the application before you for the amended subdivision plan for Tax Map Five, Lot One Thirty Two, in the R Two Zone. Our, our previous approval was for twenty-eight single condo units. And our amended plan should show sixteen duplexes and six singles. Uh, and at the previous planning board, we, we brought the board up to speed at that point. Uh, with a chronology of our design process, and I won't go through that whole chronology, but I will just hit a few of the highlights. Um, we worked pretty closely with the butters, as there are ten existing units in this particular condo association. They're already, uh, a part of, uh, Hershey, just off Hershey Lane, it's on Green Road. Uh, we worked with the butters and we, uh, several meetings with them. We end up eliminating one of the singles up on top of the dole. There were, there were seven units at one point. We eliminated one of the units and shifted those units around a little bit, shifted them away from.
You, um, not to interrupt, but do you have the plan that you wanna put up?
Sure.
Madam Chair, Scott Colton-Bios, I actually have the plan ready, if you want me to watch it on my screen.
Yeah, that's fine.
That'd be great. Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
Everybody see that?
It should be coming. We have it. Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, that's why we brought Scott tonight. So, yeah, uh, of the cul-de-sac units, uh, off Summit Circle. We were able to push one of those units away, as, as we eliminated. Uh, one of them away from the existing duplexes, which you can see to the lower right. Uh, we also were able to, uh, maintain a little bit more of the, uh, buffer between those two, uh, areas. Um, we met with the owners and talked about a little bit more screening. Um, so that, that seemed to, uh, work on, in both of our favors. And one of the major reasons was to, to go to the duplexes was when we, we had twenty-one. Single units down on the Lower Stonewall Way. When we went to those duplexes, it opened up a few more view corridors between the units. We did in fact increase the number of units, but it actually gave us a little bit more open space. Um, and given that the duplexes were already in existence, the, uh, you know, the existing units in, on Green Way. I, I, I believe it was, it was favorable for, for those, uh, unit owners as well.
Have there been any road changes?
There has not been any road changes, no.
Thank you.
No, the, the, the road geometry is, is identical. Uh, we did shift, uh, a, a drainage detention area about ten feet away from the existing units. But for all intents and purposes, if you look at the two plans side by side, it would not look much different at all. We just added a little bit of space between. The existing units and, and that detention area. And again, that, that allowed for some added buffering. Uh, so we now have, we applied for our AOT permits, we have the AOT permit back. We are, have our, uh, New Hampshire DES sewer permit back. Uh, the DES Water Board has, uh, signed off. We have our contractors, every, our trucking is all set and ready to go, and they will, they would be applying for the SWIPs permitting and the, the. EPA NOI. So that really, the only difference between the plan before you and our previous submittal, uh, a month ago. Is that we included a couple of landscape entries, but thi- this plan is identical to the plan that we had previously submitted. But it is of course different than our original, or our approval back in November of two thousand nineteen. So the major difference is just that we went with duplexes along that lower road. Um, so that the total, uh, unit count was twenty-eight, is now thirty-eight.
And the total units for the combined development relative to the original approval is what?
Well, it was fifty-two to, for, for the total number of, of approved units. It is now forty-eight if you include the existing. And as well as our proposed.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And, and from there, uh, I don't know if you have any questions of either Scott Cole or myself, but we'd be glad to open up the floor for any questions.
Um, I'm gonna open it up to the public if you are finished with your presentation, or having nothing further to present to the board.
Scott, I, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
No, I think, I think you explained it all. We're, like you said, we're in very, very good shape. We've done our homework as far as estate and everything else, and. It's, uh, we're, we're up to the board at this point.
Um, thank you. Any, uh, members of the public?
Uh, hi, uh, this is Tom Gurley. I'm the president of the Hershey Green Condo Association, which is the ten units. At the lower right. And, um, yeah, I spoke the last time, but I just, um, wanna say that, um, we're on board with this because. This is act, I mean, this is actually pretty much the original, kinda closer to the original plan that we first had, and then it switched to single family. And then it's kinda back to where it was. So, we don't really see a heck of a lot of difference, and. Paul and, and his, uh, group were very, very good in helping us, uh, get a little better buffer that. Uh, that, that extra house would have had, um, a little impact on us, so, um, we're very pleased with this. And we have no issues going forward, so. Um, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gurley. Um, any other comments from the public? I can't see everyone, so please just speak up. Okay, hearing none. Um, I will close the public hearing. Uh, any questions from the board to the applicant? Hey, Diane, you have, um, you have recommend, some recommendations in your planners' report, if you could review those, please, with the board?
Certainly. Um, as you know, this is not the first time this revision to this original plan has come before the planning board. Um, I think this is probably the third iteration. The original plan was approved back in eighty-seven. In two thousand and twelve, we spent a lot of time in relooking at this whole, um, development. Um, there were some condition, cause we all understood at the time, and, and we do now, that this is a vested project. And that the developer and others who worked, um, in. The developer had incurred substantial costs in upgrading the infrastructure, the roadways, the public utilities. In order for this project to go forward. In fact, um, in nineteen ninety, I believe the date was. The planning board at that time voted that this is a vested project. So what that means is that any changes in the town's regulations, we're really not in a position to impose. And there have been changes, um, namely, this concept was called an alternative design subdivision. Which was sort of predated our cluster development, but that is no longer in effect. So, the planning. The planning board had looked at, um, specific requirements that, um, are really kind of outside the town's jurisdiction, but we would like to seek confirmation on. And that is, um, on stormwater management planning, which are not, DES regulations are not that exempt from, um, applicability in the case of a vested project. Um, secondly, we wanted to make sure that all the pertinent permits from federal and the state. Um, were in place before the start of construction. And then the third is that at the end of the project, we would have, um, a final, uh, as-built of plan. Um, that could be used going forward before any certificates of occupancy were issued for the project. So I am, uh, following suit to what we did last year, actually, which this came before us in September two thousand nineteen. And I'm recommending the same conditions that we recommended last time, which is that the applicant provide that stormwater management plan, number one. Number two, that copies of all permits be provided to the town prior to the start of construction. And then thirdly, that, um, we have as-built drawings. We've also, um, had some discussions with the applicant about the need to have some kind of construction oversight of this by the town. Um, and some of the other projects that have been implemented over the years, um, there were some issues that came up, so. We talked about the possibility of, uh, having, uh, funds in escrow, so in the event, there were some engineering concerns that came up during construction. Able to address those issues and move forward with the plan. So with that, um, I'm recommending that we approve tonight's application for thirty-eight units on this track of land. Uh, with the three conditions, and the conditions are actually, um, on the town's website for anyone. From the public who's interested in looking at them, they're contained within my memo and, um. I, I guess with that, I would, um, present it as a recommend.
You just muted yourself Diane. Okay, alright, um, does the applicant have any questions relative to the, uh, planner's, um, recommendations on condition of approval?
Uh, I don't think so, uh, I, I reviewed, um, two of the three of them with Diane and I, I real, I understand all of them, so I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, any other questions, uh, of the board to Diane?
Uh, just had one question. Val, um, Diane mentioned thirty-eight units and I think, just for clarification, that's thirty-eight new units, not including the ten existing units on Green Road.
That is correct.
That's correct.
That's stated in my memo, which the planning board uses in formalizing the, the motions, but yes, it's for thirty-eight new units for a total of forty-eight. To that overall phase of the project, thanks for.
Okay. Thank you.
That is the application. So, can I get a motion from a member of the board relative to the application, uh, being approved with the conditions as recommended by the town planner? Jane, would you make that motion?
Yeah, um, I make a motion that, and, and you'll have to excuse me because I don't have the, the document right here in front of me. Um, and I make a motion that we accept the plan as is, along with Diane's, uh, I believe, three recommendations.
Correct, okay, and, uh, can I have a second?
That being said, I will second.
Second by Tim?
That's correct.
Thank you. Uh, any further discussion by the board? Hearing none, I will call the roll vote. Val Shelton, aye, Jane Ford.
Aye.
Um, Timothy Rosignol.
Aye.
Michael Zahorek.
Aye.
Scott Blackstone.
Aye.
Can you advance approval, congratulations and, uh, wish you much success in that project.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Please start construction and don't come back.
Okay, you got it, I, we won't be back.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, Eleven Chapel Street LLC, there will be a public, uh, this is an application for minor site plan review. Requested by Eleven Chapel Street LLC for the conversion on the first floor. Uh, six hundred plus or minus square feet of a barn to a commercial use for bicycle sales and repair. Shop in for a construction of parking access to support this use, the lot is located at Eleven Chapel Street, Tax Map U two. Lot three in the M two zone, is the applicant with us this evening?
I'm here, I'm Eric Weinberg with Altus Engineering, as well as the applicant, uh, Kepher Canal of Eleven Chapel Street LLC. Excuse me, uh, I don't think he has his video on, but that's okay.
Great, before you get started, Mr. Weinberg, Diane, is this application complete? Need to unmute. Do I need to unmute you?
Uh, okay, alright, yes, I have reviewed the application against the checklist, there were some areas, um, where there were, um, some. Things that were missing and I contacted the applicant and he was very quick to get back to us with the revised plan, so. Everything is in order, so I recommend that the planning board accept this application for a technical review, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion by the board to accept the application as substantially complete?
I make a motion that we accept the application as substantially complete.
Thank you, Mr. Dusette, is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Ford, uh, roll call vote, Scott Blackstone? You're on mute, Scott.
Aye.
Thank you, Michael Zahorek.
Aye.
Chef Golda.
Aye.
Tim Rosignol.
Aye.
William Dusette.
Aye.
Jane Ford.
Aye.
And Val Shelton, aye. Okay, Mr. Weinberg, please, uh, you, um, have the floor. Or the screens as we will say.
And I will try to share a screen here. Am I up there?
You are up there.
Fantastic. Say after a year, I'm finally getting comfortable with some of this. So this is, uh, an overview area of, of the site area, it's, uh, on the corner, I think it's actually a little bit larger than the lot, um, someone else did it, but. Uh, it's on the corner of Granite and Chapel and it's got two buildings on it now, uh, ambidetic. Engineering surveying, did an existing condition survey for the owner, uh, which identifies, I'll just go through quickly. Granite Street, Chapel Street, obviously Chapel is very steep. There's a single family residence on the lot, uh, very up close to the corner of Chapel and Granite. There's a second family, single family resident, uh, up close to the Stone School and, and Granite Street. Uh, when Mr. Canal bought the property, uh, there was a barn on the property that was in poor shape. He tore that barn down, uh, with permit, reconstructed the barn wi- in a slightly different location, uh. So that the current, uh, existing condition plan is the, uh, plan that, uh, is accurate today.
The one that we're looking at?
The one that you were looking at is, is accurate based on today's condition, showing the location of the barn. The, uh, access to the stairs going up to the second level, the deck off the, uh, off the barn and then the stairs down to the ground level. This is our proposed site plan and again, these are the three existing buildings, this is the, uh, single family residence, the second residence. And then this is the existing barn. Uh, and. Uh, we got zoning relief, um, using Chris Mulligan, uh, allow the, uh, retail. Operations to exist on the properties, but the barn is now, uh, hopefully going to be used for a, a bicycle shop. And I just want to point out before I go too much further, area here in Magenta is the location of the former barn, so when it got reconstructed. Essentially the same size, it got moved over into the center portion of the lot more so that it's on better position for, uh. In, in regard to setbacks and just in the center of the lot. Uh, so what we're proposing is to make that a, a retail use, with the basement as storage. On the bike shop on the first floor and then the, uh, bike owner, bike shop owner's, um, office on the upper level. Uh, there'll be no public access to the upper level, the a- the access to the second floor i- is exterior through that stairwell area. There are three existing off-site parking spaces, uh, that are in the street. That have been historically used, uh, by the residents there, they're not exclusive use of, of the residents and. Naturally, I don't know, I just never noticed the sign when I was out there before, but, uh, Diane pointed out, and it's in her staff memo. That, uh, this, there's a sign on the building that says exclusive use of the tenants and, uh. That, that's a nice thing to kind of put up there, but that's not, uh, reasonable or expected and we certainly, uh. Will expect that, uh, the applicant takes, removes that sign. We also, uh, are proposing that the spaces are striped, uh, and that was just to formalize it, but. That's nothing that's cast in stone, we just wanted to demonstrate that there's three spaces there today, there's room for three, uh, spaces in the future. And they don't need to be striped, that's just something that we had shown. So, we are improving the access off of Granite, we're widening the driveway, uh, out to eighteen and a half feet. And then it constricts down to, uh, fifteen and then twelve for the short portion and then it opens back up, uh, to fourteen and a half. And then the area around the parking spaces actually is in excess of the twenty-five foot, uh. Uh, aisle width, however, it's only a name, it's, uh, I think that your regulations require a twenty-five foot wide aisle. But it doesn't really flow well as a normal parking area, so. Uh, we did ask for a waiver for aisle width and we believe that a low-volume site, uh. You know, some vehicles are going to be able to maneuver that site with no problem at all, some larger vehicles are going to need to make multi-point turns. We also know that parking is not required in this zoning district, uh, when there's public parking within five hundred feet. Uh, we're just down the hill from Main Street and that is within five hundred feet, so we're providing the, uh, three-on-site spaces. As a, an amenity to the site, uh, your zoning, uh, your site review ordinance regulations require that we do provide. Uh, handicap accessible parking, we do have a van accessible space, I'm not sure how often it's going to be used. Uh, and the owner is going to need to, uh, if it does require handicap accessibility into the building. A means to, uh, make some building, uh, changes because the building itself is not ADA accessible, that, that we, we know. In regards to runoff, there's very little, uh, change in, in pervious surfaces from the pre-development, uh, conditions, however. What we're proposing to mitigate and to make it better is that, uh, when the building was constructed, uh, Bauer Construction did the, did the work. It's been reported to us that he installed a dry well drain ring, uh, just off the corner of the, the new barn. That's for the perimeter drains and what we're proposing to do is to route, uh, the roof, uh, into that. To, from the new barn to, uh, divert that from surface flow. In addition, the van accessible parking stalls are permeable. And that allows, uh, a four-to-one ratio of impervious surfaces to drain onto a permeable surface, so we're. Uh, keeping that lighter yellow area. This area here as, um, impervious, it's, it's gravel, but it's essentially impervious and allow that to drain onto, uh, the permeable surface. And I think that's really what we're trying to do, I think we're trying to keep it, uh, fairly simple, we're trying to. Make it a little bit better by providing, uh, some parking on the site and, I'm out of words. We're also providing, uh, a bike rack, uh, and we are showing some limited snow storage. And we have a note on the plans that saying, you know, this winter probably would have been fine, but there's other winters where it wouldn't have. And that, uh, no storage will be depicted in the areas on the plan, but there's not adequate space, we'll have it hauled off, thank you.
Any, um, any questions from the board to the applicant? In regards to the plan?
I do, Val.
Bill, go ahead.
Um, thank you Eric, uh. Two, two questions relative to parking and, um, pardon my ignorance here. On the requirement for a handicap parking space on a site like this, is that, is that typical Eric? It's in your regulations, um, and I do not know. Um, the, I'm not well versed enough in ADA to really know whether or not any commercial space requires it or not, I know that my building. When I got it permitted in ninety-five ninety-six in downtown Portsmouth. It's a two-hundred-year-old structure, I was not required to provide ADA access. Uh, I don't know if that's still the case and I. In small commercial operations, I'm just not sure, but it is clear in your regulations that it's required. I'm more than happy not to provide it, but have some sort of sign outside saying. If someone's disabled, we'll make commit, a way for them to get into the building. I, 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 I guess, and I can't speak for the board, I guess my position is, I, I don't want to waive that requirement and then later on find out that the ADA does require it. Um, but if the ADA does not specifically require it. If I looked at a hypothetical that three other rebutting lots wanted to do similar type developments. We're gonna have four handicap van spaces within a hundred and fifty feet of each other that may never get used, I have a handicap space in front of my office window. And in seventeen years, it has never been used. So, and then the other, um, Eric, the three parking spaces, uh, reported to be on Granite Street. Are they on the applicant's land or not? The property line, uh, is right at the edge, they are in the street. Okay, so those, those are? Those are public spaces. The, the, well, it's a public road. If I look at the existing conditions plan, I don't see any spaces indicated there.
There aren't.
So I, I'm, I, I don't know whether or not, in fact, there are three spaces there Eric. Well, if you could look at the travelway in front of the southerly building. Yep. Uh, that is out, and I'll say on the west side of the power line. And then as you cross the driveway and you go towards the, uh, the corner lot. Or the corner house, you can see that the pavement jogs in. Yes. And so, that area, it has been used historically, uh, Director of Public Works acknowledges it and he has no issues with it.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
You will get to that Diane, hold on.
I, I have it in the. Thank, thank you, that's all I have.
Any other, uh, any other, um, comments, uh, not comments, same are the questions from the planning board to the applicant? Jane?
When we talk about the parking, um, are we concerned at all about, um, spacing? Because a lot of people will come with bikes that are attached to the back of their car, or they may come with a small trailer attached to the car. Is that part of the formula in, in, um, allocating parking spaces? It's not.
They're just standard nine-by-eighteen parking spaces.
Okay, so that, but we don't have a.
Traders and.
Can the applicant answer that?
Yeah, uh, there's the standard space, uh, there's space behind the vehicle, uh, that. A bike rack can go on there, most, most vehicles are not the full eighteen feet, there are some that are. Uh, but there, there's room for a, um, a bicycle behind.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you, I was just concerned about safety.
Any other questions from board members? Kim?
Yeah, just one question on, uh, parking, or on the, the parking, um, is that area basically, you've got the two s- parking spots if you were to pull straight into the lot and then there's a, a little jog basically to the southwest? Yeah, down to the southwest there, yep, in that area there, is that meant to be a, a turnaround or is that an additional parking spot there?
That's part of the turnaround area.
Okay. Yep, and then, yeah, I mean, just it's meant to be a bike shop, which inherently most bike enthusiasts are gonna be somewhat, I'll say, health-conscious and, and fit, i- is it that critical to have those parking spots on the owner's property, or is it acceptable to, to use existing town parking, like you said, down on Main Street, or any of the existing town lots?
Yeah, there is shared parking under the zoning, um, and, and we can talk about that.
Okay.
Um, any other, uh, Tim, I'm sorry, was, any other questions?
That's all, thanks.
Any other?
Yeah, I had a question.
You have the floor, Scott.
Um, on the, the lower right, um, area where the snow storage is, uh, does that literally butt onto the historical society parking lot?
O- over here?
Yeah.
Uh, it's kind of just, it, it I didn't think that was a parking lot, it, it's just kind of a green area, it doesn't really have a lot of vegetation growing on it, but it is, I didn't think it was intended as a green area and, I mean, uh, as a parking lot and
I was thinking, wouldn't it make sense to put a fence there? To separate that property from the, um, you know, from the historical society?
Uh, you could actually drive through right now.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes, you could.
There's some kind of reciprocal agreement, isn't there? Or is there? I don't know.
I, I don't know of any reciprocal agreement, I know that during construction there was some shared access, uh, between, on the two lots.
But, um, I think that would be important to know, because of traffic flow.
I mean, it would not be intended to have traffic over there, I don't think we have the right to park.
No, okay. Um, Scott, did you have other questions?
No, that was it.
Any other board members?
I, I have one more, Val.
Okay, can we get, let Jeff get in here, Bill first, thanks, Jeff, you have the floor.
Thank you, Val, um, quick question for you, Eric, on the, the building on the south side of the, of the property, is it, is it typical that adjacent to a parking area where there are, what I believe are LPG tanks? Uh, would there typically be bollards placed between those and the travelway?
Uh, good question, and yeah. Excellent question, there, there are not any now, but, uh, and as a residential use, it probably wasn't required, but where it becomes a commercial use, uh, there definitely should be some there, that, that's an excellent point.
Thank you, I, I, I just asked one more question would be, is there a, Granite Street is a two-way street and is there a requirement for a travelway um, to not be impeded by striped parking areas? Uh, width?
I, I don't know if the town has anything, anything specific.
I, I think that we would take that up in the TRC. Um, Jeff, any other questions?
Oh, that's gonna do it, thank you very much, Eric.
Okay, uh, Bill, you're back up.
Eric, it doesn't show on the existing conditions plan other than that it's a pad on the south side of the south building. If you look in Google Earth, that pad has a oil tank on it and that appears to be across the property line, if this wasn't a site plan review, opening up this type of thing, we wouldn't even look at it, but since this is site plan, um
Right here?
Uh, yes.
I, I don't know if that's a oil tank or, I think there was some sort of, uh, window box and plant that goes beyond.
Um, let me look.
It might be an oil tank a- as well, I mean, my mind went to, uh, like a bow window and a window box type here.
Yeah, it looks, looks like an oil tank as of, uh, well, it's an old photo, so there was, in twenty-twelve, there was an oil tank there.
Uh, I believe the tank was removed.
Great. That's all.
So that, that's why I never saw it.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, so, um, I, I think we want to send this to limited, um, to the limited TRC review? Is that your recommendation, Diane?
Yes, it is, and I have provided a recommendation, I've spent a lot of time looking at this lot over the last six months and I have had many discussions with several people, including the applicant's engineer, and he has come together and come forward with three iterations of the plan and with each one, it's an improvement and I want to thank him, Eric, for his due diligence, because this is a very difficult lot, this is a lot that's barely, um, point-two acres in size and there's a lot of activity going on in this lot, you have two structures and they did get a variance from the zoning board and they were granted relief, but in the, in addition to the two homes and apartments, there's this new space that was created from a former barn and, um, unfortunately, there was, when it was located, uh, there wasn't a whole lot of consideration as to how the site would work for any kind of, um, uh, commercial retail use. As a matter of fact, the building inspector at the time, um, was very clear with the applicant and indicated that that space, that barn could not be used for commercial, could only be used as an accessory building. But here we are, there's been some changes that gone to the zoning board, they got their variance and good for them. I do want to say that, um, we're only talking about sixty, sixty-five, six-hundred-fifty square feet of commercial space on the lower floor of this building, but, um, there's a lot of activity, there's not a whole lot of open spaces you can well see, which is one of the reasons I asked the applicant to provide some color to the sketches so that we could see that, yes, there's very little, very little open space, there's very little area for for drainage and if you look also closely, you'll see that, uh, it's very, very tight parking for maneuvering, getting in and out of those spaces and they, yeah, they have two parking spaces plus an ADA and yes, we will get some feedback.
Diane, just, you, you are, you want to send this to limited technical review committee?
Yeah, but I want, I want people to understand the process that I went through in coming up with my recommendations and had, also I consulted with the Public Works Director who said there is not enough space out there for three parking spaces and he is recommending that it be reduced to two, there's also a stop sign there and there's also limited
Yeah, okay.
So, this is what, I want to be able to impart the message that this is an extremely difficult and challenging site and that, yes, indeed, we need to have a technical review on parts of it and we also have some retaining walls that are being proposed and those have to be designed by a structural engineer and there's a whole variety of issues that come into play. So, normally, something as minor as a six-hundred-twenty square foot commercial space would just be dismissed at the first meeting. In good conscience, I can't recommend that that happen and I'm recommending that our town consulting engineer do a review of the plan focusing on the grading, the, the drainage and the waivers that would be necessary for parking and also to, uh, get something formal from Rick, I have a one-line, um, Rick, our Public Works Director.
Okay.
One-line, um, email from him, but, um, I guess my point is that, yeah, we really need to have a TRC. I have presented that to the applicant and to my understanding, he's, uh, agreeable with that. So, uh, with that, that would be my recommendation, that we forward this to TRC and that we continue this to, um, a future date.
Okay, so who would like to, thank you, who would like to serve with the, on, who would like to do a limited review on this? I need like three people who are in agreement to, to serve on the TRC. Bill? Jeff? Missing anyone? I need one more.
Suppose I'll jump into this one?
Thanks, Tim, appreciate it very much, okay. Diane will coordinate with the applicant and with the, uh, any department heads that need to be involved on this for input um, and obviously have the, um, the applicant, um, have the application get over to the, uh, the town engineer for review as well and comments back to the applicant. So, um, with that in mind, I would like a motion to continue this application, um, the hearing to the May eleventh meeting? Who is making that motion? Bill, you're unmuted, you got it.
Okay, I'll make that, I was hoping somebody else, well, I'll, I'll make the motion that we continue to the May
Eleventh.
Eleventh meeting.
And a second, please.
I got it, second.
Jane is a second, uh, so, roll call vote, Scott Blackstone?
Uh, I, I
Thank you, McHale Zahork?
Aye.
Jeff Goldknop?
Aye.
Tim Rosignol?
Aye.
William Dusset?
Aye.
Jane Ford?
Aye.
Valerie Shelton, aye. Motion carries and, uh, we will see you back on the eleventh.
Great, thank you so much, it, it's been a while since I've, uh, been before you guys in Newmarket and uh, it's always a pleasure, I, I like the way you guys run your meetings.
Thank you, hey, have a nice evening. Um, next on the agenda, a new or old business? Any board members, any, excuse me, new or old business to discuss? Diane, any new or old business before I get into committee and chairman's report, you'll still have a planner's report at the end. Nothing on any prior applications?
There is a virtual, um, program being put on by the Office of Strategic, to strategic initiatives and that's on May fifteenth, Susan Jordan has sent out information and, um, for any of the new members, this would be a good opportunity to get some, uh, hands-on training for, uh, the work that the planning board does and help to make sense of this process that we find ourselves in, so, anyway, there is money available to pay for any registration fees that might be incurred as part of that, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Chairman is not with us, vice chair has nothing to report, uh, any, are any committees, or any other commissions meeting? Um, do we need to appoint any members, we should think about that at the next meeting, to, um, the different commissions? Who is, is Sarah serving on, um, Conservation Commission?
Sarah is no longer on the
Yeah, right now on the board, um, so that, I meant, we need to replace Sarah on the Conservation Commission. Um, so Diane, could you just put out a memo as to what appointments need to be made and break, and we'll have that on the next meeting's agenda?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Um, hearing no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, re-adjourn.
Good job, Tim.
I'm a fast learner.
A second, there you go. Jeff had a second on it and, uh, roll call vote, Val Shelton, aye, Jane Ford?
Aye.
Bill Dusset?
Aye.
Tim Rosignol?
Aye.
Jeff Goldknop?
Aye.
McHale Zahork?
Aye.
And Scott Blackstone?
Aye.
Great, thank you, everyone, enjoy the rest of the evening. And, uh, next month, I, I think we may be transitioning over to, uh, the town hall as more and more people get vaccinated.